I had that not removed off my head.
We'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I would like to welcome everybody who has come out for the meeting tonight, and also those will be viewing the meeting on our G10 channel. To begin the meeting tonight, I would like to recognize we have a troop of young ladies here from the Girl Scout troop 3462. Their leaders are Leah Reynolds and Heather Dixon. If you could bring your folks up here, I would certainly appreciate them leading us in the pledge allegiance tonight. We're going to do the pledge and then we will remain standing for the invocation by our city attorney. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause to acknowledge your presence in our lives and in the life of our city and community, and to give you thanks, to give you thanks for the blessings you so graciously bestow upon us individually and corporately as the city of Jacksonville. As we enter this election season, we are so thankful that we live in a democracy, that we have the right to vote, and that we exercise that right. But let us never forget that that privilege and right and all the privileges that we have as Americans was paid for by a price, and is still being paid for today by a price. That men and women are serving to keep those available to us, and we should honor them by exercising them. And we do pray tonight for our service members who are serving here and around the world, for their families, their anxious families. We pray your safety would be with them, and your guidance and direction would be with them. As always, we pray for our mayor and for our council, that you would lead and guide them in the decisions they're called upon to make this evening. All this we ask in your holy name, amen.
Everybody can we say that? Is anyone working on any special badges or anything? Which ones? Okay, alright.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much for helping us out tonight, really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Did you want to tell him something about your badge?
Oh, tell me about your badge. Which one? Fun patches, okay, oh my goodness.
That's a long conversation right there.
Those are so neat.
And you have to look at that baby's back too.
Well, you're getting some there, aren't you? Your patch collection's rolling. Okay, well, thank you so much for sharing that with us.
You're doing good.
Good job, ladies.
I want one of those smores.
Smores?
Smores, smores adventure.
Counsel, each of you should have received a copy of the agenda, proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. And I would ask, I would entertain a motion to approve, but also to add an item under consent agenda. You can make this item 6B, I guess, would be a good number here. This is a refinancing of some revenue bonds at a better interest rate. Mr. Carter?
And also, the mayor would ask that you delete item number six, the use of contingency funds, that item, please.
Yes, and delete item six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Alright, we have some presentations for tonight, and I'm going to come around front here. Alright, for our first presentation this evening, I have a proclamation, but before I read it, I'm going to invite up Miss Amanda Compton. She's present here, she's the membership director for Girl Scouts of North Carolina Coastal Pines Jones in Onslow County. Leah Reynolds, troop leader. Heather Dixon, and all my girls back up here again for joining us back, I could have kept you up here. On March 12th, 1912, Juliette Daisy Gordon Low assembled a group of girls from Savannah, Georgia for the first ever Girl Scout meeting. She believed all girls should have an opportunity to develop physically, mentally, and spiritually. Today, over 3.2 million girls and adults are active Girl Scout members. This city is pleased to present a proclamation in recognition of Girl Scout Week. Whereas March 12th, 2016 marks the 104th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. Whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls gain knowledge and develop skills that will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their communities. And whereas, Girl scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them today in science, technology, engineering, math, and the arts, as well as other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas, Girl Scouts has shaped the lives of 53% of female senior executives and business owners, 60% of women in Congress, and virtually every female astronaut. And whereas, in partnership with nearly 7,000 adult volunteers, Girl Scouts of North Carolina Coastal Pines serves almost 25,000 girl members in 41 central and eastern North Carolina counties, including 848 of adult and girl members in Onslow County Services Unit. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the week of March 6th through the 12th of 2016 as Girl Scout Week in the city of Jacksonville, and I applaud the commitment Girl scouting has made to support the leadership development of girls in North Carolina. How about that?
We would just like to say thank you for supporting Girl Scouts in Onslow County, and Girl Scout cookie sale lasts till March 5th, so make sure you check out our Girl Scouts outside of the Walmarts and Walgreens selling cookies. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much. Thank you, girls. Let's get some good pictures, we'll move this, and any of you folks who want to come up and take pictures. My picture taken with all these pretty ladies. We're going to mess up the picture. Mayor, I'm going to have a moment of personal privilege, ask Deb Forni to come forward and stand with her daughter and granddaughter who are scouts. So, come on up here, Deb. I'll embarrass you good, you get me to Markey office. Go stand up first. Now, what we're going to do is, just go up in the office. And get good pictures of that camp. Okay. Yeah, well, she was going to be a spectacle. So when y'all start selling the cookies? Four weeks ago, okay. I was going to say, I already have some, I've had some, so I was hoping I didn't get them illegally. Next, we have a recognition of the Jacksonville Onslow Council for the Arts, and this is our art block contest winners for this year. I'd like to ask Cindy Edwards, who's interim board chair, and Rebecca Cooper, who's the gallery manager here, if you would join me up front. As part of the inaugural art block held in spring of 2015, an art contest was held for elementary school children grades K through five and middle school children grades 6 through 8. The contest was sponsored by the Jacksonville Onslow Council for the Arts, and the theme of the contest was, "What does Jacksonville mean to you?" The Arts Council and the winning artists requested an opportunity to have the winning artwork displayed at City Hall, which is being done as we speak, right? So, actually, there's a piece of work right there. Is Colin Smith and his family here? Is this the artiste?
This is the artiste.
Alright. Hey, Colin. Thank you for coming out tonight. And this is yours? How old are you? Alright. Colin Smith, he's from Karen Cowan Edwards Art School, was the first place winner in the elementary school grades K through five category. And I'd like to show, this is his winning work here. Congratulations, Colin, good job. I know you and your parents are very proud of this accomplishment, and we appreciate y'all taking the time to come out tonight. And I do have a little something for you, this is not much, but it's a little something I wanted to give you in recognition of your job well done here. Kim, can you get this? Okay, next, anybody?
If you have to get it somewhere.
Hey, get on, get on. I'll just take it. Good job, Colin. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
The first place winner in the middle school grade 6 to 8 category is Luke Miller. He couldn't be with us tonight, but we did want to show you his fine work here. I see some very steady hands here, I never could keep it within the borders of the, I'd be all over it, all over it. But we are also proud that we're going to be able to display his artwork here at City Hall. And also want to thank the Onslow County Arts Council for all they do to stimulate and promote art in our community. It's one of the finer things that we can look at in our community and appreciate it, Cindy. Appreciate you, you know, filling in and acting as interim chair.
It's a privilege.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
If you don't mind. It's an honor to celebrate the work of our young artists and all artists in our community. One of the things that we look forward to, and I'd like to invite the entire community and everyone here to please save the date. April 16th of this year will be Art Block 2.0, and you are all cordially invited to come and visit us at this event. There will be food trucks, there will be art on display, art for sale, and a variety of art and music and entertainment options for your enjoyment. So, be right downtown on a Saturday, so come join us on April 16th. Thank you.
The last presentation we'd like, last but not least, we'd like to recognize our USO here. And with that, I would like to ask Marissa Reader and Chuck Huff if you would join me and I'm pleased to present a proclamation to the USO of North Carolina in honor of the 75th anniversary. We had two 75th anniversaries this past week, right? Jacksonville Center is the oldest continuously serving USO in the entire world, not just the country, but in the entire world. And thank you very much for taking time out of your busy schedules to come tonight, and we would like to recognize with this proclamation, and I will read it. Whereas the USO was established and the first USO facility opened in Fanville in 1941, the Jacksonville Center opened in 1942 and has never shut its doors. And whereas the USO of North Carolina Center in Jacksonville is the longest continuously operating USO in the world, and whereas in these 75 years, the USO of North Carolina has led the way in strengthening North Carolina's military by providing connections to family, home, and country. And whereas, the USO of North Carolina provides critical services that meets emerging needs and serves as force multipliers, augmenting or filling gaps in Department of Defense and Military Services programs to include direct troop support, troop and family resiliency, transition assistance, and family support services to more than 536 military and their families. And whereas, today, the USO of North Carolina has expanded to meet the evolving needs of our nation's military and operates airport travel centers throughout the region, and a mobile center that provides support across the state and during emergency response for North Carolina National Guard. And whereas, across North Carolina, its 24 employees and nearly 800 volunteers spent 92 cents of every dollar donated to the USO on the USO programs and services that had a direct impact on our armed services members and their families. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, mayor of the city of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of February 2016 in honor of the USO's 75th anniversary in the city of Jacksonville, and I encourage all citizens to join me in congratulating the USO and extending our gratitude for its exceptional service and contributions to this community. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and the citizens of Jacksonville. Marissa, she's a little under the weather tonight, so I get to be at the microphone. Just wanted to say that we wanted to thank you as citizens, as we go out and support our service members, as we heard in prayer, our freedoms that we cherish so dearly, they don't come free, there is a price. And it's just an honor to go and give back to our service members as they are providing for us. So, anything that we can do, we just try to. So, I just want to say thank you very much. Yes, sir. Okay, I know at this point, I know that a lot of you have come just solely for the presentations tonight. Excuse me. So, I'm going to take just a moment, as some of you probably want to leave, if you do, that's fine. If you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's also fine, but I'm just going to take a real brief pause in the action here if you wish to leave. Alright, we have come to our first section of public comment for the evening, I've got a couple of folks that are signed up tonight, if I can find the list. I have Mrs. Mary Moore, who has signed up, is Ms. Moore here? If you would come up to the podium, please, and if you would, please state your name and address for the record for the clerk, please.
Good evening. My name is Mary Louise Kierzer Moore, 1013 Greenway Drive, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28546. Need the phone number?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
We wouldn't want you to get any bad phone calls.
Okay, I'm just here to, you know, give you a public thank you to my members. At this time, officers, just raise your hand so you know who the officers are. Thank you. Okay, to Mr. Sammy Phillips, mayor, Mr. Richard Woodruff, and to this wonderful council, all of you members, to your visiting guests, to each and every one of you, good evening. I stand before you to publicly thank you for letting us march down Newbridge Street. I thank you for letting us a simmer in the back of City Hall, Mr. Richard, Mr. Glenn Hargit, everywhere he's at, Ms. Camilla George, I came and I had a little meeting with them, and they just stretched their arms out to this MLK, Keeping the Dream Alive. And I just want to thank you, thank you, thank you. You don't know how much that mean to us, because we're a little group trying to keep the dream alive. And to you, Mr. Jerome Willingham, we just thank you all so, some of you, I might don't call your name, but you know who you are. I thank you, he attended the whole thing, the march, the program, and he just sit there until it was over. And I just want this council to know you got good council members, and he even had lunch with us. And I just want to thank everybody, I just can't thank you enough, and I know my minute's probably up, but to God be the glory for all of the good things he has done. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And thank y'all for coming out tonight, it's very nice of you to come forward and thank us, and we were very happy to help. Thank you. I have Mr. Kevin O'Connor.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kevin O'Connor, 210 Newport Drive. Approximately 5-6 cents of the last property tax increase by the city of Jacksonville was directly attributable to the Onslow County Board of Commissioners changing the sales tax distribution to the ad valorem. Here are the numbers. Surf City, North Topsail Beach, each one of
We need to raise property tax 1 cent throughout the county in order to keep the state out from coming in and taking over the budget. Because that's all it was. $1.2 million to the county is approximately 1 cent. I could have handled that a lot better than every single property owner in South City of Jacksonville eating 5-6 cents, as well as all the commercial properties eating 5 or 6 cents out of that. It's coming up on voting time. And again, we need to go back to the 60-40. Now, last 30 seconds that I have, if we were to go to the per capita, every single resident in the county would get approximately $170. Me personally, I don't think the per capita is necessarily the best way to go. I don't think the straight ad valorem is the best way to go. There were a lot of people that went in to work the 60-40, including the State House and Legislature. And everybody needs to get out and vote. And thank you very much. The Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts are great. I have a life member, a Gold Award and a Silver Award, and I have an Eagle Scout in my house. And most importantly, you guys did a fantastic job. You guys did a fantastic job, JPD, on Second Marine Division. Thank you very much.
All right, we now have come to adoption of our minutes and the consent items on tonight's agenda. We have one meeting, minutes for one meeting from February 2nd, 2016. It was a regular workshop meeting, and this time I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes from that meeting and also the consent items to include the deletion and add-ons. Some of them. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That brings us to some old business, and this is a map amendment. Let me get to it here. This is rezoning from RS, Residential Single Family 7 to Office and Industrial at 140 Piney Green Road. And Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item. Jeremy?
Mayor, last time you recessed the public hearing, so you can go right back.
Ah, yeah, that's right.
Let Jeremy's comments be in that public hearing.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and reconvene the public hearing in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, at your January 19th meeting, I presented this rezoning request by Jacksonville or, excuse me, United Pentecostal Church of Jacksonville located at 140 Piney Green Road. Just to remind you of its location, near the intersection of Piney Green and North Marine Boulevard. Their original request was to rezone from RSF 7 to O-N-I. At that January 19th meeting, there were some concerns brought up by an adjacent property owner, and council deferred their decision to tonight's meeting so staff could work with the applicant. Since that time, the applicant has modified their request to O-N-I-C, or Conditional Office and Institutional. The conditions they are asking are to limit the uses only to religious institution and daycare. Staff has reviewed this modification, updated the planning board at its February 2016 meeting, and found that it is still consistent with both recommendations. Therefore, we are recommending approval of this request from RSF 7 to Office Institutional, Conditional Office Institutional, with findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative and that the rezoning advances the public interest by correcting a non-conforming use and makes it consistent with the future land use map. The applicant, as well as representatives, and Parker and Associates and staff will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, I think Jeremy made contact with Mr. John Jackson, who was a citizen who spoke last time, and that he's not here this evening, so I presume he's...
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Jackson, the property owner who had the concerns, and updated him on the modification. And he assured me that made him feel a lot better, and he was comfortable with that modification.
Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and reconvene the regular council meeting. And what you're being asked to do, counsel, is to approve the rezoning request or consider the proposed modified request.
Mayor Phillips, I move that we approve the modified request with findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative and the rezoning advances the public interest by correcting the non-conforming use and makes it consistent with our future land use map.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. This brings us to agenda item number eight for the night. This is a public hearing on rezoning from industrial to corridor commercial and Western Boulevard and Lejeune Boulevard, Lejeune and Western Boulevard, and Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council. Staff is bringing before you, staff initiated rezoning, proposed rezoning of 31 parcels located at the northwest corner of Lejeune Boulevard and Western Boulevard. Notice on the vicinity map, the property is highlighted before you. This is aerial photography of the site. As you can see, this is all currently developed property. The Kama Land Use Plan identifies the 17 parcels along Western Boulevard as regional commercial and the, I believe, 14 along Lejeune Boulevard as office and institutional. This is the current zoning of these properties. It is industrial, and city staff is requesting that we rezone it to corridor commercial. That would make it consistent with the Kama Land Use Plan for those properties along Western Boulevard. And if staff is directed to update the Kama, those 14 along Lejeune Boulevard would be updated or consistent with the land use plan. This came about, staff was asked to do a zoning verification for one of the properties out there, the Liberty Inn. And we identified that is in an industrial zoning, therefore non-conforming under the UDO's use table. So if that site was to burn down or be destroyed, they would not be able to rebuild. So that had staff look at this area as a whole, and we identified all those properties along Lejeune Boulevard and Western before you, all are more suitable to be zoned corridor commercial because of the uses. If this zoning was to move forward, there would be a number of existing developments that would be brought into conforming status. There would be no new non-conforming statuses created. This is what the zoning would look like if it was to move forward. If changed, there would be approximately six uses that would go away that are currently allowed in the industrial district, such as boat repair and servicing, concrete, asphalt plant, fuel and bottled gas distribution. Those type uses would no longer be allowed. However, there would be 16 new commercial uses that would be permitted on these properties if they were to redevelop or be reoccupied. City staff presented this to the Planning Advisory Board at their February 8th, 2016 meeting. They, along with staff, are recommending approval of this rezoning request with findings of fact B through J being found in the affirmative and to direct staff to update the Kama plan for parcels along Lejeune Boulevard in order to make the finding of fact A to also be found in the affirmative and find that the zoning, rezoning advances the public interest by allowing for more orderly and logical development. City staff will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Collins?
How did it come about that this was industrial and office in the first place?
We received a zoning verification application for the Liberty Inn. And in doing that, it was determined that that property is currently zoned industrial. And we presented that letter to the applicant, and that obviously caused some issues with them with an existing use that was non-conforming. And so as we looked at that, we identified those other properties in this area. Historically, it's just been zoned that way. There are a number of other areas in the city, specifically those along the old railroad corridor that are currently zoned industrial that city staff may be bringing forward at future dates for this same type of rezoning. The development just does not reflect that type of use anymore, and it is more consistent with our Kama land use plan.
Let me add a comment to that. When we adopted, green as go, sorry. When we adopted the new UDO in April of 15?
14. 14.
Okay. We tried to make as few changes in the zoning as possible. So if it was industrial, it went to industrial. What we should have done in hindsight is to go a step further and to look back at the actual uses, because what happened was the use table that was allowed under the previous zoning is a different use table than is allowed under the UDO. But when we made the direct conversion of industrial to industrial, it resulted in these properties and we believe some others becoming non-conforming. It is appropriate for us to be proactive now that this has been brought to our attention. As Jeremy said, this is the first of several that you will hear where we will be correcting and changing the zoning because of what we found in this research.
I didn't want to beat a dead horse here, but I thought we changed this during our last land use map update. A lot of these properties should have been shifted over. I'm just, I'm like Randy, I'm surprised, because I thought for sure that we updated it with our last land use update. But apparently, we didn't. I thought it was all changed, particularly on the corridor, 17, and Western, and Western Extension, 24. Because we changed all those. Do you remember that?
The Kama land use plan reflects, just as you stated. We just didn't take the next...
But I thought that when we adopted that change, we changed the zoning with it.
We made it a point not to rezone anybody's property. That's what we're taking steps to do now. But the Kama plan does reflect the corridor commercial.
So now we're just bringing those back into...
Right.
Okay. So we didn't...
The only exception for tonight is this blue area at the bottom, along Lejeune Boulevard. That's office. We're gonna convert that from office to corridor commercial.
Makes complete sense.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you for clearing that up. Any other questions, Jeremy? Okay. All right, we're gonna recess the regular council meeting, open up public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone present wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Counsel, are you being asked to approve the requested rezoning?
Mayor Phillips, I'll move that we approve the requested rezoning, findings of fact B through J being found in the affirmative, and direct staff to do the updates on the Kama plan with those parcels identified in order to make the findings of fact A to also be found in the affirmative and find that the rezoning advances the public interest.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Brings us to agenda item number nine. This is a voluntary annexation petition on Carl J. Beecham Senior Trust of 1.14 acres on Western Boulevard Extension, adjacent Marine Credit, Marine Federal Credit Union. And Ron's gonna, Mass is gonna present this item.
Mr. Counsel, this voluntary annexation petition was received from TriCorp Investments LLC on behalf of Carl J. Beecham Senior Trust for a 1.14 acre parcel that is contiguous to the current city boundaries. The tract is located in Western Boulevard Extension adjacent to Marine Federal Credit Union and across from Forum Road. The site is surrounded by corporate limits. The developers anticipate combining this and the adjacent property in order to develop an Aldi grocery store on this site. The cost and revenues analysis has determined that over the five, first five years, the net revenues will be $176,060. Staff recommends to council adopt the annexation ordinance as presented.
Any questions, Mr. Mass? All right, we're gonna recess the regular council meeting, open up the required public hearing on this annexation ordinance. Anyone present wishes to speak to this matter?
I see no one, and I'm gonna close the public hearing and reconvene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you've been asked to consider the annexation ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the annexation ordinance be approved by the City Council.
In a second, in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Brings us to agenda item number 10 for the night's meeting, and this is also Community Outreach, and this is a request for additional funding. And Lily Gray, our Community Development Administrator, will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of Onslow Community Outreach to request additional funding for the installation of islands, curb, and gutter, underground utility sleeves, overlay of the parking lot, and other site improvements as needed at 1210 Hargit Street, which is the location of the new homeless shelter. As you may recall, back in October, you approved $150,000 to help with the installation of the sprinkler system. That project is underway, so this will be considered a Phase 2, which would move the project to the exterior of the facility and begin some site improvements that would be very beneficial to the community. So we're asking that you would allow us to amend our 2014-2015 annual action plan to award the additional $130,000 for this purpose, and it will be provided in the form of a deferred forgivable loan for 10 years. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Gray?
One additional comment we would like to make. It is understood in our discussions with the Onslow Community Outreach that these funds must be expended by the last day of April 2016. Any funds that are not expended by that time will therefore revert back to the city. This is not, this is, there is a time-sensitive nature to these funds, and we want the record to clearly understand that these funds must be totally expended, as with the $150,000 originally loaned as a forgivable loan, by that date, or the balance is relinquished to the city.
Is this finishing? This last 130, is that the last?
This will, this will accomplish the goal that we have regarding the expenditure of the Community Development Block Grant Funds, along with other actions that we're currently taking.
Counsel, any questions, Ms. Gray? I'm being asked to amend the 2014-2015 annual action plan and also to award an additional $130,000 for this purpose. Second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right. So we, we're gonna have another section of public comment. Anybody else come in that didn't get a chance to sign it, wishes to speak? Raise your hand. All right. We're gonna go on to the report section for tonight's meeting. I'm gonna start out with Mayor Pro Tim Lazar. I think you have a report prepared.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share with you, as I put at each of your desks, the feasibility report that we received at our TDA meeting.
must be expended by the last day of April 2016. Any funds that are not expended by that time will therefore revert back to the city. This is not, this is, there is a time-sensitive nature to these funds, and we want the record to clearly understand that these funds must be totally expended, as with the $150,000 originally loaned as a forgivable loan, by that date, or the balance is relinquished to the city.
Is this finishing? As far as this last 130, is that the last?
This will, this will accomplish the goal that we have regarding the expenditure of the community development block grant funds, along with other actions that we're currently taking.
Counsel, any questions, Ms. Gray? I'm being asked to amend the 2014-2015 annual action plan and also to award an additional $130,000 for this purpose. Does that move? Second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right. So we, we're going to have another section of public comment. Anybody else come in that didn't get a chance to sign it, wishes to speak? Raise your hand. All right. We're going to go on to the report section for the night's meeting. I'm going to start out with Mayor Protem Lazar. I think you have a report prepared.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share with you, as I put at each of your desks, the feasibility, feasibility report that we received at our TDA meeting. As you know, our Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority commissioned a study on sports and what sports would be most valuable to our community in creating overnight stays in our lodging facilities. As most of you know, sports tourism is over a $6 billion industry in our country, and here in Jacksonville alone, sports create over $2 million per year in economic development, or economic impact, I should say, and so sports is a, is a big business. So we entered into a study with the SFA, which is a sports facility advisory group, a well-renowned group that does this business all over the United States and some foreign places. Even Evan Elif of the Sports Advisory presented the final report last week at our meeting indicating a group of sports include volleyball, basketball, pickleball, and similar court-based activities that could create a new market for overnight stays, creating an enduring facility for the play of those sports. And before you, you have a lot of information and a lot of detailed information, but in a, in a summary, they proposed an 88,000 square foot facility. A no-beam facility basically means that 88,000 feet of convertible space that you can be utilized for various different sports and events, a multipurpose facility. This study did not seek any means of financing the project. Basically, it talked about what sports, the numbers, the revenues those sports would create, the economic development, the overnight stays that these sporting activities would generate, and also some projected cash flows in and cash flows out. So again, I provided that so that you have the opportunity to look at it and, and, you know, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate. And if the council would further like a complete presentation, I can make that happen as well. I was pleased that the chairman and the vice chairman of Onslow County Board of Commissioners, the sports commission chairman, vice chairman, executive director, our city staff, Richard Woodruff, was also present. It was a very good presentation, a lot of information to digest, and certainly we are at a very early part of this process of investigating the opportunities that may, may be presented in our community. So if you, any of you have any questions, please do not hesitate to shoot them at me, and I'll do my best to get you an answer.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Warden?
No comments, sir. I mean, no, yeah, no report, yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
No report, thank you.
Ms. Washington?
I just want to report from the environmental and appearance advisory group that we did not have an opportunity to meet this month due to our lack of quorum, and also in preparation that some of our members were volunteers for the 2nd Marine Division this year. But I want to comment that the subcommittees have been meeting, and we are in preparation of finalizing our plans for the Arbor Day ceremony, and this year will be our 36th anniversary as a tree city for the city of Jacksonville. So information will be forthcoming soon about Arbor Day celebration.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I'd like to suggest for our calendar, we don't recognize Black History Month on our city calendar. I'd like if we could do that, and maybe the city manager could check and see if there's a consensus amongst council to, to support that recognition on, on our calendar. And maybe one of the pictures would be of this fine group and all the work that, that they have done. And Ms. Moore, if you could come forward and talk about your scholarship activities. We are aware of, a lot of people are aware of your march, and you're keeping the dream alive, but a major part of what you all do is your scholarship. If you could just comment about your scholarship activity.
Yes, sir. We do give three scholarships, and we ask that each student fill out the application the way that we have them to fill it out and what they're saying, what college they're planning to attend, we want from their school, their grade point average. Also, we put in there, we asking that what church they belong to, you know, making sure the children is on the right track. We just don't want to just give money. We making sure the money is going for a good cause. And how we accumulate the little money, this group you see here, we only do a $25 donation each year. We have a 50/50 little raffle, and we ask anybody, including you too, for a little donation. And that what enables us to give these students a scholarship. And this year, we gave three, $300. We gave $900, our little group.
Very good.
So you see, we need help from you too, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Very good. In March, I hopefully will be attending the National League of Cities, and one of the objectives that I'll be working on is the, the resolution that the National League of Cities Black Caucus passed in support of the, a national holiday for the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution. We, with great pride and patriotism, enjoy our 4th of July celebration every year, which was for political freedom, and it's time that we recognize the human freedom that resulted from the adoption of 13th Amendment. And la, last year, it was 150 years since the adoption, and even the 4th of July celebration as a national holiday, it took about 100 years, I think, before that became a national holiday. So it's important, and it's not just as a historical recognition, it looks forward also. The Civil War, there were 640,000 casualties. That amount surpassed all of the casualties up until the Vietnam War of all the foreign, all the other wars put together. So we all know the, the impact that that had on the history and our lives. So, but again, I said, it looks forward too because it's prospective. There's about 800,000 people involved in human trafficking. Human trafficking is a major problem, and we need to focus on that, and perhaps a day of that kind of recognition would help deal with that. 800,000 people worldwide involved in human trafficking, and a lot of those slaves are here, and it's a $32 billion industry, human trafficking, billion. And so hopefully, something like this can give a little more focus and attention to that. So that's one of the things that we'll be trying to meet with the federal legislators in, in March. Nothing further.
Mr. Bittner?
Yes, Mayor. This is the first meeting we've had since the 2nd Marine Division 75th anniversary troops' march through downtown Jacksonville, and I think I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the pride that I had, and I'm sure you'd share, and the great job the city organization did in paving the way for what was an awe-inspiring parade. The letter to the editor from the 2nd Marine Division general said it much more eloquently than me in terms of the thanks and appreciation for making their troops feel just like home going through Jacksonville and the event at the park thereafter. I'd also like to thank the Civic Affairs Committee, who on short notice pitched in and acted as ushers, made special arrangements to help, help guests get around, and they, along with all the other volunteers, truly made us proud of the kind of community we are, and I just want to relay my thanks and appreciation. That's it.
Thank you. And I was going to say a few things about it, but I'll cut my comments short. I know that when General Woodruff first approached us here at City Hall about this, I think there were some hesitations on his part as to what to expect from us, but I think we, based on the letter that he did write and post in the Daily News, I think he was very satisfied with the outcome. Had the opportunity to attend the parade, it was, it was very, a wonderful event. It was one of the, probably one of the greatest events that's occurred in this town in many, many years. And just to see all, all those young Marines, some aren't so young, but, you know, all those young Marines marching down the New Bridge Street, you could see the pride on their faces. But I hope they saw the pride on ours, you know, you know, what they do for this country. But it was a great event, it turned out really well, and again, you know, I want to echo Mr. Bittner's, thanks to the staff from our city and the volunteers that made it all possible, and it turned out, it couldn't have turned out any better than it did, so kudos on that. And anyway, with that, Dr. Woodruff.
Glenn, if you'll please come in from the control room. Or wherever, here we go. The gentleman on the staff that made the parade possible is our own Cecil B. DeMille, and I think that you would like to join me in commending Glenn for a job well done.
Thanks goes to you, council members. Indeed, we just merely acted on your behalf. It was a large team of people, not just me, it was a large team of people who helped put this together, and with the collaboration of the Tourism Development Authority, doing some financial backing for it and some other things that happened, I think that we did fulfill the statement that Mayor you made on December the 17th to command the gentleman and such. These are good things. Thank you, sir.
Well done, Glenn. A couple of other things. The city is nearing the, the erection of a new fence at the Sydney Cemetery, at the city cemetery. We want to let the public know that when you begin to see some trees along Hargit and trees along 24 adjacent to the cemetery being removed, it's an anticipation of the new cemetery fence. Mayor and council are aware of this. We would certainly remind the public that that fence is made possible through the donation of the estate of Mrs. Kovach. The city will forever be grateful for what she has done, and obviously, the executor of her estate, Mrs. Waters, is overseeing the project. Also, we would like to inform the public that over the next several months, there will be a number of trees along Western Boulevard that will be removed. Under the new state legislation, any tree that blocks the billboards is allowed to be removed. The city does not have the ability to block that. On the other hand, we are working with the billboard industry so that when those trees are removed, that new landscaping will be put back in its place. Lastly, we would like to mention that the accounting has now come in relative to the Christmas lights. Over the last several years, the city has worked as part of its 3E project, which is economy, effectiveness, efficiency, and we are converting more and more of our lights to LEDs. Ron Massey, the deputy manager, has worked closely with both of the power companies, and you will notice throughout the city that many of our streetlights are now LEDs. We spend over $400,000 a year just on streetlights. We spend over $400,000 a year just on streetlights. That's more than one full mil or cent of your tax. By going to LEDs, we are getting a lower bill, and I'll give you a quick example. At Christmas, we put up, obviously, the Christmas lights. Over the last two years, we've converted all of our Christmas lights to LEDs. That resulted in a savings this Christmas in just the, what, three months, two and a half months that they were up, of almost $6,000. So we want the public to know that the city staff and the mayor and council every day try to find ways to hold down the cost of the taxpayer, and that's just a good example. Lastly, as always, Mayor and members of council, thank you for your leadership and the guidance you give us. Thank you.
No report, Mayor, thank you. With that, we're going to end the session. Ms. Bittner?